Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us. This is the Board of County Commissioners Workshop. It's August 16th. If you could please stamp for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a flag this afternoon. Where's Mark Moore at? There he is. Good job with the flag mark. A pledge of allegiance.
...
Thank you. Please. Mark Roger made me say that, so thank you. Well, thank you for joining us, and this will be our final budget hearing for the year. Not the final final, but Roger, in turn, review yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners, and everyone. First, thank you to, you know, Pete is our CFO, the Budget Office, and everyone in the organization that helped craft this budget. You know, the more we grow, the more complex this budget becomes. And so with the leadership that you all have given us, and thank you for the policy direction has been very clear, which makes it much easier to do this work. And then David, the Assistant County Managers, and the Directors, and all of their staff members, it really is a collective one organization effort. And so we appreciate, we appreciate everyone so much with this. Mr. Chair, as you've said, this would, is designed to be your final budget workshop for the fiscal year 2223. And then in September, September 6th and September 20th at 5:00 PM will be the two public hearings required by law. If after the conversation today or during the conversation, if you have any other direction that you would like to give to us, if there's some tweak or nuance that you want for us to work into this budget, please let us know, and we'll make that happen. But today, you know, Pete will, will review with us the three specific actions that you directed us to accomplish for this hearing. And then I just, I was gonna say this at the end of the board meeting, but I think, or the end of this workshop, but I think it, maybe I'll say it twice. You know, this year, we had about a 14% increase in the general fund budget. That's a big increase for us. And it is driven by increased demand from growth, and it's driven by inflation. The economic conditions, you know, are, you know, we think we're in a recession or headed to recession, but the state estimating conferences most recently revised their projections for property values next year at 10%. We'll see. But, you know, we can't stand too many years with this kind of an increase. This is driven by inflation and, and, and demand. So everybody gets that, and it's all good. But we just have to be very careful and mindful of increases for the coming year. So with that, Pete, if you'll begin, please.
Thank you, Roger. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So as Roger stated at the last second draft of the, of the general fund budget on August 2nd, the board, you as a board gave us clear direction and clear parameters on what you wanted to see at this workshop. So with that said, we went back, and here were, here were the three parameters you gave us. Include 5% compensation adjustment beginning October 1st. Maintain a minimum general fund reserve of 85 million. And come back with a general fund tax rate reduction recommendation. And so in the next few slides, you'll see what, how we've incorporated that into the, into the draft budget. Just wanted to show you this slide. This is just a 20-year history of the countywide tax rate. And, you know, the board's attempt to, you know, keep taxes in line with, you know, with the burden on taxpayers as well as the resources that we're given as a government to provide services. So you can see the history there, and you can see last year, we went to the rollback, which is the first time that's, that's ever been done. And then this year, our proposed or recommended tax rate, and I'll get into that in the next couple of slides. Commissioners, you've seen this slide before, but I, um, uh, these slides are, the, the wording on them has kind of gotten off, out of, out of whack. But you've seen this slide before, and it's a good slide because it shows not only the board's fiscal, major fiscal policies that helped the county recover from the recession, but also it shows your policy of both, of a few things. One is a minimum reserve level in the general fund, another policy of excess, an excess reserves policy. So if you have reserves above that minimum level, and those reserves you hope increase each year, you spend them a little bit each year on one-time, non-recurring items. They go back up, they come back down, and you kind of cleave off some of that excess reserve each year, which the board has invested in a lot of projects, mostly public safety, water quality, transportation projects. So this shows, you know, coming out of the recession, the deficits that we were running, and then finally bringing the budget back into balance. This shows the ending reserve each year. After that, excess reserves, reserves invested. So these reserves were taken out before the number you see in the ending reserve column. And those were invested in, in primarily capital projects, equipment, and capital funding. Just a couple of other sources that were invested. One was a BP, a BP settlement for the BP spill. Another was a repayment to the general fund for some land that was purchased. And then your growth increment funding each year, which is now part of your continuation budget. You can see that 88.4 million has been used of that to go toward transportation projects. In this slide, just, you've seen it before, and it's not to go through these lines, but just to show you that at the bottom, this 581.1 is the final general fund number that is proposed for fiscal year 2223. We've gone through some of the, the cost drivers in, in the budget in, in the previous workshops. So this is kind of the key slide, Commissioners, in the presentation. What we are recommending is a reduction in the countywide millage from 3.8623 to 3.8123. That gives you revenues of about 576 million. Expenses, as you saw on the previous page, 581.1 million. So you have just a very slight deficit, which the board stayed the last workshop, it would cover with, with reserves, excess reserves, after setting the minimum reserve at 85 million. So that comes down to what our current year-ending, undesignated reserves are. Adjust that for what we're going to cover for that slight deficit. And then our proposed spending from excess reserves for this coming year. Sheriff's capital, which is a continuing item, you're, you're likely to see this every year going forward because we do not, the sheriff does not incorporate that into his, his ongoing operating budget. We, we pay for that separately out of excess reserves. Second year of payment for the clerks, second and last year of payment for the clerk's financial software. This is key right here. These are capital, when I say capital projects, these are capital projects for those types of projects that do not have dedicated funding source. So it's primarily water quality, flood mitigation, public safety, primarily EMS stations in this situation, and a little bit of parks and wrecks. And the shade structures that you talked about earlier today are being, are being paid for over three years through these excess reserves. So not only are we recommending to transfer enough funds for those capital projects for fiscal year 2223, but getting ahead a year, so do it for 2324. DOT equipment, that is the equipment that goes along with the 17 new positions in the Department of Transportation, which are required just because of the, of the, just of the use of our, of our transportation system, transportation network, and, and the growing demand. And then a small portion of, of general fund major maintenance we're proposing out of excess reserves. So in total, you can see 41.6 million of excess reserves being used. Remaining reserves are 88.2 million, and the minimum reserve is 85 million. So you just have a slight cushion there. And then Commissioners, we project that out. We do a five-year projection. On this slide, you want to see your total revenues, which is the yellow line on top, above your blue line, which it, which it is. It's a little bit below in the beginning, but then, then comes into, then, then goes above it in the projection. Total expenditures, and then the dotted line at the bottom is your set 85 million of reserves. And then, and then your excess reserves is that dotted orange line. And you can see in 2025, 2026, that, that starts to go up because at that point, we have paid off a significant amount of, of general fund debt that we've been paying over the last several years. And Commissioners, that is the direction that we received, and that is our proposal to take to the first public hearing.
Any questions for Pete this time, the staff? Any questions? This was a great presentation. Thank you. It was great. We go for all these projects. Pete, if you could go back to slide number four for a second. I just wanted to, I think it was slide number four. That one there. So Commissioner Greenwell, I don't know if you, I know you've been catching up with everything. We're moving so fast here. You came in right in on the budget. That's one of the, I don't know. Has staff told you about growth increment, growth increment funding? Have they explained that whole to you, how that started back in 2015? Good. Okay. Because that's a great thing to talk about when we're out publicly. We're always, people ask, well, my property sold, my values went up, my taxes, how you use the taxes. So we're able, with the help of the county manager back in 2015, to force that policy. So if you sold a piece of property for a house $400,000, somebody else buys it for $400,000, that new year of taxation, we capture that increase. We don't raise anybody's taxes. Your taxes aren't going up, but we capture that money that first year and use it for growth increment funding. So it's not restricted to, you can't use it for like impact fees or restricted things, that growth increment funding. We've been using that for the last seven years now. Probably ask around eight to $10 million a year extra funding that we capture. Because the second year goes back in the regular general fund. But the first year of increase, we capture that. So we have people move here from north, they buy that new home, they pay the increased value. We capture that difference, and we can use that for building roads, parks, different things throughout the community. Project, capital improvement projects that we normally wouldn't have that money for because it's dead, it's not dedicated for that. So didn't know if the staff had a chance of explaining that to you yet or not because I saw it pop up there on the slide. We don't talk about it every day because it only comes up during budget time, since you weren't here last year, making sure you knew about that. So, great program.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any comments, Commissioner Hammond? Did you?
Yeah, I'll defer. You have something?
Sure. So Pete, essentially what we've done in the budget is 5.3 million dollar deficit. It's really been supplemented or taken out of remaining reserves and bringing that down to 93.88, correct?
Correct.
So the half percent we got is just really all coming from reserves. You know, the half percent we're getting is just coming, just lowering the reserves.
Yes, exactly. And Commissioners, you know, last, this is forecasted. These are forecast, a forecasted deficit. You see the 5.1 million this year? We won't realize that. I've been pretty aggre, we've been pretty aggressive on our revenue forecasts for, for, we're having a record this year, this year. And we're, we forecasted pretty much same level of revenues.
Pete, is there any reason, I mean, we're almost, we're certainly through July and part of August. Is there any reason to believe that the revenues aren't trending the way they're supposed to?
No.
And real estate values, we obviously book on a calendar year. So obviously, the record real estate values we have, we're not going to see a downturn until 23. I mean, we're still recording, so we'd have to have a pretty dramatic change in the marketplace for the average for the last four months to actually trend down. 10% probably, one might say, could be conservative as well.
Correct.
Based on trends. Yeah, I mean, from my point of view, I was looking more for a, a true 1% cut, not a half percent. But that was just this Commissioner's point of view. That's what I was looking for.
You know, the comments I was going to share, that I would love for the, the public to know as they look at this specific chart on slide four here, is, you know, if you, if you look at it from left to right, you know, that left column called GF Budget, that's your, that's, that's the total amount that it takes for us to run the county and provide all the services to you. Your ambulance service, your parks and recreation service, all the things that you get from living in Lee County, your sheriff's office. It's all in, in that 581.1 million at the bottom this year, you know. I would want them, the general public, as they see that surplus deficit column, to know that, you know, this year where it says the 5.3 million dollar proposed deficit, you know, that's, that's intentional thing that we're doing to try and make sure that we're not over-collecting their money. We're spending, intentionally spending some of our reserves down because we felt like that reserve was more than we needed. Our surplus was more than we needed. And so instead of just holding your money in a bank account, we're going to put it to work for you. And then as you look at that column that says ending reserve, there's your rainy day fund. If a hurricane comes, we're projecting that we'll have 88.2 million dollars to help answer that unforeseen emergency. We've, that's plenty of money. I've never seen us through the pandemic, through the hurricanes, through the blue-green algae crisis, ever use that. And then if you look at the column, this is where it starts to get interesting, called excess reserves invested. I'd want the public to know that that's 162.2 million dollars over the last basically eight years. That was surplus money that they paid in taxes that we put right back in to use to try and serve them in the community to, to keep up with things like the parks and the sheriff's capital needs and things like that. And then the growth increment funding, all the way on the right-hand side, that's where growth has been paying for growth. That's where we take the extra dollars that come from that house being resold, or that new house that, you know, was vacant land, paying very low taxes, is now paying higher taxes. That, that's 88.4 million dollars we've put towards infrastructure to try and keep up with growth. And I just think it tells a really good story of how we've tried to manage their money really responsibly over the last eight or nine years.
I think the most of all important is the, the top three things, the water quality, capital improvement projects, and public safety. That's the main three priorities that we're funding here is for public safety, road improvements, and obviously water quality, so. Commissioner Sandelli, did you have any comments?
When the governor called me in 19, let's see, Mike, gave me one direction, that's to be a good steward of the people's money. And so I think that, I think a certain way, and I think we've done a good job. Roger started off with, we've got a 14% increase in growth income funding. And, you know, that all hits us a certain way. But I, I go back and I look at the last four years. If you look at the last four years and the delta there, on average, it's probably 4.5%, 5%, something like that. So it's hard to, we have to deal year to year. But I look at the responsibility that we've had, the things that we've delivered. And so then the question is, we've always had the discussion, so people always say, we're going to catch up. And how do you do that and stuff? And then, and then when you look at the growth increment funding, what that does, I'm pretty happy with what I've seen. I think we've been good stewards of the people's money through some really challenges. I think some of this stuff will smooth out, so, so I feel pretty good about it.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Roger, were you, did you have asks for us today? Do you have more?
I would have to discuss more of the 1%. 1%, I would, I'd like to discuss that a little bit more and see if we can get more of a consensus.
I agree with the half percent, but I think if it's possible to do the 1%, I would, I would like to open that up for a little more discussion if possible.
Did you have, the staff have any presentations that would, how they reflect and how it affects the capital projects in the future as far as reserves and bond balance?
No, so we've not, we have not had a conversation about a full 1%. We can certainly do that between now and, you know, the first public hearing, if you like. Or we can present it to you, we can talk about it at your, at the next board meeting in three weeks. You know, under county manager item, if you like. But we can, we can show you what, the, sort of the upside and downside, if there is one to 1%.
So just so that I understand, so you're saying instead of going from 3.86, whatever, whatever it was, we, we're going, we're proposing to go down to 3.81, but you'd like to go down another 5 cents per thousand of taxes?
3.7623, so another half.
Yep.
So fundamentally, last year, if I may, Mr. Chairman? Excuse me. So last year, we left this budget at the 7.5 million dollars in reserves. Okay? And however we want to characterize what we did, those reserves grew to 135 million dollars. Basically what they did. So we were okay with 87. We said 85 is the number. We're at 88. Again, to Commissioner Hammond's point of view, it's the taxpayers' money. So what's magical about 88 as opposed to 85? That's 3.8 million dollars, which basically is going to come, come close to paying for exactly what I just proposed. Living with the 85 we set. We're going to get consternation over 88 as opposed to 85? But, you know, we're also recognizing we're actually doing something, and we lived with 87 last year. What's the damage of 85?
You know, if we can just free flow, you know, because it's a workshop. Pete, do you know, what did the, so the way I've been kind of talking about it in terms that I think hopefully people at home can understand, it was a reduction of a nickel per thousand, for every thousand dollars that your house is worth. We reduced it a nickel for every thousand. So what would be to take it to a full 10 cent reduction? What was, what did the nickel cost us, or what was the reduction in revenue from the nickel?
5.4 million.
5, so for another 5.4 million, then we could actually do the full 10 cent reduction, basically. Okay.
One of the ways of getting 60% of the way there is just taking us to 85 million dollars as opposed to 88.
Well, it would take us slightly below the 8, the, the 85. However, there's probably a great chance that we'll realize better than that, just.
But, but it's 88. We're going to, if we agree upon this, we're going to close at 88, 244.
Right.
So we had said 85. So the difference is 3.2 million dollars. So just keep it at the 85. I mean, we're half, we're more than halfway home.
Yeah.
So again, 85 was the direction, it's 88, you know. So where's our revenue going to be? Our revenue is certainly going to be higher than 10%. It's August. Sales taxes trending in the right way, it's ahead. I mean, by pure definition, last year, we closed with 87 and a half million dollars. That's what we closed when we left this budget workshop. They grew to 135 million dollars. The only way they grow is we don't spend the money, okay, in a real simple way. The capital adjustments that come through are a result of that. And, you know, issues like we have 41 million dollars in excess reserves for projects, I question every year, having done this, this is now my 16th budget, I've never seen the capital projects all get done. It's never done. And I mean, if you just delay one every year, it's easy to come up with a 1.6 million dollars, which is really how we get home to the 5 million dollars. And to me, we have a historic increase in property values. And to me, if 85 is 85, then why is it 88? It's 85. I mean, to me.
I, I don't think it's irresponsible. I can support it. I think, you know, the lead about line of path to.
Well, to your point, Commissioner Hammond, it's the taxpayer's money.
Yeah.
And we have demonstrated as great stewards of the money to not only take that number that we did last year at 87 and a half million, and we have current undesignated reserves at 135 million dollars. So they grew some 47 million dollars. So am I going to lose, and the trend before, when I came on this board, we went to rollback rate, so they grew even greater. So is the trend right now, and I understand there's a storm coming. I recognize that. I deal in the money world every day. But it's not today. And today's an opportunity to certainly also offset the property values that have gone up and do everything we can to make sure we're looking at this in a way. And I look at this, and if 85 is the number, 85 is the number. 88, we don't need. The 3 million doesn't give us any more of a cushion. At least we went to 135. We didn't, I mean, that's what we ended up from 87 and a half. And I'm sure the trends we're operating right now are greater than, you know, our projections. I mean, I've never met an accountant in my world, in my life, that projected revenues overextended and expenses overextended. They generally project revenues under and project expenses over. Tell me what you do. Or expect, I'm sorry, you project expenses over. You know, the problem in government and in the real world, Mike's world too, my world. I mean, right now, we finance equipment throughout the United States. You know the biggest problem? There's no equipment that's coming into the States. So the backlog is creating, so what we're doing is government. We're holding on to money with the hopes of budgeting it to do every capital project, which we're never going to do. We never did in the best times. And now I got a strained labor force, I get strained supplies. So there's no way. I mean, it's grandiose thinking. There's no way we're going to get this all done. And at the end of the day, whether it's reserves or reserves for capital projects, it's still taxpayers' money. So from this Commissioner's point of view, I'd like to go down a percent, not a half percent.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring that up. I know in my business world, you know, really the way I kind of look at things is, we all set budgets of what we're going to spend on certain projects. Sometimes we had tremendous increases over the last year of cost, supply, demand, but yet we were still able to meet those numbers. So I don't think we're going to see that kind of demand. I think that demand will come back down as far as supply, our cost, our fuel cost, you know, hopefully those things come back down. I believe they will. So I think we easily make the 85 million dollars, and that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Pete, you have a question. So to make up the difference of the millage if it was decreased another nickel, half a percent, would that all come from the reserves, or would it affect any future capital, like human services or any other projects? CIP for roads or anything? It would only come from the reserve, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
At the very least, you can cut the reserves to 85 and move the millage rate down a 3%.
I've been, I've been, I've said probably every year I've sitting here, I've said, I always want to get, put some more of that money back in the community, create jobs and create infrastructure for our community, put that money. It's great having the reserves. Commissioner Hammond, you said it right. We've been through pandemics, we've through hurricanes, oil spills. And yet, we usually get reimbursement fee man or whatever the agency here is. It's great to have the reserves. We need it for our bond rating, but also we can put that money back in the community and either through projects like this. I definitely support that.
The challenge we're going to have is the next three years. Because we have a ton of debt that's going to fall off. So however we get through the next three years is what we're going to do, because there's going to be a lot of relief. You know, when you look at the chart, I mean, 20, 25, 26, 26, 27 is going to be where we have a lot of relief. So this is 2223 budget. I got to get through fundamentally two more budgets, and we're going to see some real lie at the end of the tunnel. It's almost like us is homeless. The mortgage is almost paid off. I mean, it's real debt being paid off, and that's a drain on our revenues. It's a drain on what we have to do. I'm just looking at, gas prices have started to come down, okay? They're now talking to us being in a recession. So if we delay a project, maybe instead of being on the upside, we're going to catch on the downside because obviously we can't get to the projects. So, you know, the Fed is indicating we're going to raise interest rates. But in the early part of next year, we're going to lower interest rates, and we're going to be in a dead recession. So I'm just looking at this saying to myself, I don't disagree with anything Pete's done, but realistically, can we get all the projects done? That's my two cents. I think Pete did a great job, and I'm not advocating. I'm just looking at this as a snapshot, saying, you know, I could live with 85 million. That's a further reduction. And I'm just looking at 41 million dollars worth of projects from excess reserves. And are they all going to get done? That was what I brought up the last meeting as well.
And I think it's important to point out, we're really only talking about if we go down to the point, we need to find 1.6 million dollars. And that's easily coming out of that 41 million dollars.
1.8 probably, but yeah. That's my two cents, but I'm, I'm obviously, listen to anything.
Roger, you heard the discussion, so do you have any comments or suggestions regarding the consensus here?
I'm going to go have a good cry. Tell Commissioners, this is how this is supposed to work, all right? Everybody brings a different experience to the table for these conversations and discussions. And, you know, you're elected to create policy for us to follow. And what you're having now is a very important policy discussion about the millage rate and the future. And so, you know, this, we have to do some adjusting, but that's okay. You know, we'll, we can make work whatever you all tell us you need, and whatever you, you, you know, based on your philosophical approach to taxation, want to get more money back in the hands of the general public? Absolutely. If that, that's your position, then that's exactly what we'll do. So, you know, we'll, whatever instructions you give us, we're, we're going to make it work. So, you know, we'll, whatever instructions you give us, we're going to make it work.
Well, I'm very confident in your staff, we will do that, and make sure we do the right, the unfortunate thing, we just don't know what's going to happen in the future of the economy, the feds raise interest rates, we don't know. I know there'll be some adjustments over the next couple of years, I just, I support those, I just, hopefully in the future, nothing dramatic happens on a national level where, you know, we find ourselves two, three, four years now having to raise taxes to fund our current needs and fund our services we provide to the area. I don't want to reduce our services, that's my concern, that's why I'm making, clarifying that it's come from reserves, not from current services. As long as we'll be able to provide our current service levels now, and fund our current projects we have going forward, the ones that are scheduled to go based upon the CIP, you know.
Commissioner, is it, oh, good, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Good discussion, and I think it's certainly worked well. Again, I go back to my own wheelhouse and stuff like this, and right now, we're hopeful that revenues will continue to increase based on people coming in and all the work that's being done. But I don't know how strongly people are believing that that's going to carry forward with the pace we've had before. The other side that we do know is that expenses are going through the roof, you know, on a lot of different fronts. And that's where I have the challenge of saying, how do we bet the income piece against the expense piece? We know the expenses are going up, and maybe they will mitigate, you know, as we're all hopeful, but I don't know that. But we're betting on both sides. I mean, if the consensus is to go to, you know, to the one, I'm sure I can live with that. But from my perspective, I still have some concerns.
Sure.
Good, Roger.
Commissioners, the, you know, this is the art form in this kind of a process, and, you know, we've got this, this economic environment that we're in, that everybody, everyone's well aware of, we're betting on the future just a little bit, but you know, the economy comes back one hundred percent of the time, the question is when? We're, I think we're in a fairly good position to do what you've asked, because as, as the commissioners pointed out, in between twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven, we jettison a lot of general fund debt. And so considering what we think are going to happen to property values, given what we think is going to happen with capital projects and expenses, and knowing that as a, as a, as a fact, that so long as we don't pick up additional general fund debt, you know, between growth in the, in the tax base, some fiscal, fiscal control, and, and with the jettison of debt, I think, you know, we'll, we'll work it out.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just look at the chart that Pete has on the projection of millage rate, and we're looking at the twenty-two, twenty-three budget right now. Basically can forecast, and I respect Commissioner Sandelli, we're going to forecast revenue, and revenue certainly through August is trending better than ten percent. We're starting to see relief at gas and some other prices. I do believe that anytime you raise monetary policy, you see an adjustment expenses. The consumer just can't buy a home that they bought at two percent, at six percent. The car that you buy at two percent, you're now paying eight percent for. The economy has to, you cannot raise interest rates. This is my sixteenth budget, I've been around the block in oh-seven, worst times ever. We get through twenty-two, twenty-three, we're adopting it. Twenty-three, twenty-four is really, we're, we're seven months through the process right now, because we recognize revenue at the calendar base. So basically, we have twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. That's what we have to get through at the end of the day. And I've seen every recession imaginable, and the worst one ever, and I've governed through it. This is my sixteenth budget, the recommendation I make is there is an economic side, both the income and revenue, and then expenses. I do believe we're going to be light on income, we have every year, and I do believe expenses are going to catch up. I do believe because fuel for the first time dropped, and continues to drop. The Fed's going to raise interest rates in September. And as someone that's been in monetary policy for thirty years, there's a direct correlation between raising interest rates and slowing down the economy. There's no, because homes alone are a problem right now. Wall Street Journal yesterday, builders are now struggling because there's not the demand out there, you can't go out and borrow the money. So the people that used to be able to, aren't. It has a trickle-down effect to everybody. And I'm trying to catch the sweet spot on the expense side, and I do believe, Ray, that expenses are coming down, and we're not going to have this hyper, because the consumer is going to make that happen, because the consumer lives on debt, and that's what the consumer does. Not everybody has a savings account, and too many people move paycheck to paycheck. And when you squeeze their paycheck, they can't do it anymore, and they can't borrow anymore. That's how we've been funding this economy. Anyone that reads the way money's been spent, been funded by debt, and the debt's getting too high. And when it goes up in price and value, you have to pay too much for it. Can you afford the same mortgage payment if it was seven percent and paying a three percent? No. Those are just facts, and I haven't been through the cycle, and this is what I do for a living, I'm just making a recommendation, and again, I respect the popular here. I'm just looking at this in a prudent way, and looking at it in a measured way, that it's twenty-two, twenty-three we're doing right now. Twenty-three, twenty-four, we're seven months through. All I'm trying to do is get to that spot on the graph, two years over from there, and get there, because that's where the debt falls off, and that's where we have a lot of relief. So managing this is really a couple of years, that's what we're trying to do. And right now, as someone that ran for office, said that I would do everything I can to make sure we do all the things we do, we take care of our employees, we've done all those things, we just looked at this in the most prudent way, and I'm challenging people in the room to just say, can we do better? That's all. It's, and it's not personal, can we do better? I gave a suggestion that gets us sixty percent of the way to my recommendation. Everybody's comfortable with eighty-five million.
Anything else, Roger?
Commissioner, I think just, as I listen to your conversation and have been thinking about this as well, you know, the consumers right now, we're one line item in their, in their, you know, their monthly payment. And when you take a look at all the rest of their line items, and depending on where they live, they could be paying city taxes, the water management district, the high statistic, maybe the fire district, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. And if, you know, we end up at three point seven, six, two, three, when you add up the rest of the aggregate millage rate that somebody's going to pay, it's going to be about twenty mils, by the time it's all said and done, depending on where you live. That's a big, that's a big nut to crack. And then when you add the inflationary costs on top of it, it's, you know, it's untenable for a lot of people. So I think this is a very responsible thing to do, and, you know, we'll, we'll make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete, did you have any more of your presentation, or are you done with it?
No, that's it, commissioners.
Were you done with your presentation? Do you have anything else to add or anything?
No.
Thank you, good job on that, though. So any more discussion, Roger, you got clear direction now?
We're all good.
Okay. No more of the, no other discussion, we can adjourn? Are we good?
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, we're adjourned.